Six o'clock. I'm gonna open the meeting of the Board of Selectmen, it's December 27. And if I can get somebody to make a motion to waive the Zoom.
Wait in seconds.
Clark, I.
The Lloyd I.
Waitman I.
And Nichols I. Just speed Zoom on that one. Uh, we'll start with the pledge. The pledge will be to declare the flag of the United States of America and ensure the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Can I make a motion to approve Treasure Ward 22, W13, and Payroll 22BW13?
Wait in seconds.
Any discussion? Uh, roll call.
Clark, I.
The Lloyd I.
Waitman I.
And Nichols I. Next on the agenda is the meeting minutes from December 13th.
So moved.
Wait in seconds.
And discussion? Roll call.
Clark, I.
Should Lloyd I?
Waitman I.
And Nichols I. This is gonna be a Zoom meeting, alright?
Yeah, push it right along.
Alright, uh, first on the agenda is Department Heads.
No.
No. What's first on the agenda?
Petitions, applications, awards, and presentations.
Alright, we have those on the agenda.
No, I don't know if he wants to sit there for an hour and a half.
Alright, are you making a recommendation we move it to the top of the agenda?
Yes, I do.
Anybody have any objection? Alright. David Williams. Hey Dave, you wanna come on up? Alright. You're the one standing with me. Alright, thank you very much for your service. We'd like to honor you tonight, uh, for your retirement, pending your retirement as of, uh, the end of the month, 31st. So the Town of Rutland Select Board, a proclamation honoring David M. Williams. Whereas David M. Williams served the West Boylesman Fire Department from September 1975 to April of 1990. Served the Sunapee Fire Department from October 1990 to November 2007. And joined the Rutland Fire Department on September 25th, 2007. And whereas David A. Williams served as an on-call firefighter from 2007 until promoted to captain on March 21st, 2011. And then promoted to deputy chief on September 1st, 2017. And whereas, after completing more than 46 years of combined service with multiple departments, Deputy Chief David M. Williams is retiring on December 31st, 2021. Now therefore be it resolved that the Rutland Select Board does hereby proclamate December 31st, 2021, as David M. Williams' Day in the Town of Rutland in appreciation and recognition of his many years of dedicated emergency service to the humanity and to our community. Presented on behalf of the Rutland Fire Department and the Rutland Board of Selectmen this 27th day of December 2021. Thank you very much. You good now?
Yep, I'm good now.
Alright, we're gonna go to Department Heads. Building Department. Dave McRae.
Hi, he's on mute.
Oh, is he on mute? Hey Dave. Can you hear us? I think, is he on mute? I think you muted, Dave. Dave? Yep? There you go. Alright, thanks Dave. Uh, so, so yeah, if you can just give us a little update on, uh, what's going on with the department, we'd appreciate it.
Well, things are pretty stagnant, uh, since material prices went up, but permits are pretty constant, new house building, a lot of personal things have gone down. Uh, there really hasn't been any issues with much of anything. Um, things are going along steady. Um, it's just the season, right now things have slowed down a bit. I really can't think of much, uh, anything else unless you got something specific to ask.
Does anybody have any specific questions as far as the building?
Nope.
Okay, so all the, all inspections and everything are all up to date at this point, Dave?
Each and every day, I try to make sure there's nothing hangs over to the next day. Uh, despite many times I'm here late, I left today about 3:15. A little hurting, but, uh, there's nothing left for the next day, I try to do that each and every day, so everything's caught up each and every day.
Alright, well, we very much appreciate your, the update and, uh, your work that you've done for the town. And keep up the good work, so anybody have anything else?
Does he need anything from us? Just like, support wise or anything?
Uh, what's that?
Leah's offering you support. Do you need anything?
I, I can't hear too well in this, uh, sound a little bit.
No, she was wondering, do you need anything from the board as far as any kind of support or any, anything in the department?
Um, no, we've been budgeting everything, we're all pretty frugal there, between me and Lynn, uh, we try to cut everything down, so we're not looking for anything, uh, just a couple expenses to be maybe stretched a little, like some of the, uh, temporary inspectors filling in if anyone goes on vacation, or, uh, the former, uh, inspector has been vicious enough to step in a little bit because of my incident lately, to go on some inspections. Uh, I've tried to do some myself, uh, some that today worked out a little unusual, um, with vertigo. But, uh, everything's just moving straight along, um, good thing that the season slowed because of what happened, but, um, otherwise we're just trying to be a struggle with everything and we don't have to see any budget issues and everything, everybody's happy.
Alright. Well, like I said, we, we appreciate it and we appreciate your, uh, coming in and, uh, during a difficult, difficult time.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks Dave.
I appreciate it, I'll lay down now, thank you.
Take care.
Thanks.
And then we're gonna go to, uh, cable, cable TV. Paul?
Thank you very much, good evening. Um, I'm going, what we've been dealing with, uh, probably normal monthly and yearly things and licensure, that we have to have licenses for all of our software packages and so on and so forth. And we've been looking at equipment for the future. Um, some major changes were brought on us, as they were everybody else by the innovation of Zoom and everything else that comes along with it. And so we just approved a bit, a little bit of $37,965 for hardware and software supporting it. And, uh, it has a scope of services that will be provided and a list of items that Cable needs to do to prepare for it. And also been working... Pardon? Also been working on ability to broadcast two mea- two meetings simultaneously. Equipment plus reconfigurations and other software and so on and so forth. Also, uh, we've been working on making a scheduling system for this room here, as it had been, uh, becoming very increased in proper, uh... People wanting to use it for different, uh, meetings and this sort of thing. So, um, we are also, uh, working on, um, a system that will work with access through this room. So in other words, they can come in, access this program on town website, and, uh, be able to, uh, reserve this room for a meeting. It has become, um, sometimes a little bit problematic to get everybody in here all at the same time and all at once. Nobody really wants to hold two meetings in here at the same time, but it's, you know, one of these things.
Paul, can I step in for just one second, please? Uh, Tamika, would you show the thing that I brought up, please, to you? There we go. That's the calendar for January, for this room. Now, there's one sheet which is on the 12th, that's actually something we're doing in the Blair Room, so this room is technically free, but RCTV will be concentrating on the ZBA hearing, uh, and nothing that goes on in this room. There is in fact now a policy adopted by the Cable Advisor Committee and a form to reserve. The standing meetings, the permanent meetings are already reserved, nobody has to worry about those, but every time the ZBA meets or the RDIC, somebody needs to submit a form to reserve this room, so we can track it properly. So, as you can see, uh, we're getting pretty busy in here. Thank you, Paul.
No, no problem, thank you. Okay, and, um, something else that we've been dealing with, um, we're working on having remote site capabilities to here, from, at this present moment, the likes of Glenwood School and Naquadah School, so that we can go over there and broadcast the program live over the TV center up here. Um, so far we've had, uh, some mixed results with it, there's been some difficulties with Charter, and now there's one other issue that we're trying to get sorted out, uh, hopefully we'll get that done within the next few weeks and can find out just about where we are with it. And, uh, the last thought that I had would be to, uh, possibly and probably revisit the Town Hall downstairs project with an eye towards a, uh, projection of further definition and finalize it. And, um, just received Spectrum, you gave us our annual grant, uh, 3% of the total amount of billing that comes out of the Town of Rutland, and it came to $79,194.63. Last year we received $888.05, so it's a difference, difference of $893.42 that, um, the money that we receive from Charter for a year is, um, down. We were also waiting to hear from Charter to find out when they're going to want to start contract negotiations, as a new contract will be due in 2023. And once we get the information to get started from them, then we will get started. Um, if any of you have followed any of the, uh, goings-on with the city of Worcester and, uh, I call him Charter Spectrum, um, you'll notice that it's been a little bit contentious. Um, I don't know that I have any particular arguments with the way that it's gone, but there are some changes that Charter's gonna have to make, and there are some different things that we're gonna be looking for as well, so. It will be, um, well, it usually takes us about eight or nine months to get through the whole thing because it's a matter of going back and forth between meetings and whatnot. But, at least we're waiting to hear from them that they're interested in getting started. So, that's pretty much where I stand, do you have anything else you'd like to add, Peter?
I have a couple brief things, well, as brief as I know how to. As Paul said, 79, roughly $79,000 we received from Spectrum that goes into our cable, cable account, the PEG account, uh, we spend from that, we are completely funded by that, and our costs to keep the lights on for our next fiscal year is $89,000. And that's before we do any of the projects or buy any of the equipment that we know we're going to want to buy, which is by the way, uh, budgeted at another $90,000 on top of that. Uh, we don't expect all of those costs to come through, we, we sincerely hope that, uh, that about $40,000 of that will be spent this year, but we are waiting to make sure that we don't run into supply chain issues with the equipment that everybody else is running into, so we put plate, we carried over a couple budget line items into next year for that, so, uh, one of the things we at the committee are looking at is how we're going to, uh, to finance our, our existence, uh, because we can't keep spending like this and get less and less, fewer and fewer dollars, and still exist. Uh, we, uh, several years ago, we were a completely volunteer organization, we now have five paid positions, that's a significant part of the budget, um, but that's, again, between salaries, the license fees we have to pay every year, the maintenance fees we have to pay every year, the ability to buy cables and connectors and all the little pieces, that's 90 grand this year, which is more than it was last year, of course. Uh, so that number goes up, and if our numbers keep coming down, cord cutting is real, that's all I can say, we know that the number of houses in town is going up, but the number of people getting cable TV is going down, so we have a funding problem, uh, within a few years, we think. I'm gonna throw one other interesting number at you, 159. This is the 159th meeting of 2021, that RCTV broadcast, post-production, produce, stream, Zoom, puts on, on YouTube, all of that, do the math, that's three a week. And remember, we started this year with nearly, with only virtually the Select Board using this room, and you saw that calendar, it's a lot more meeting going on, and RCTV's involved in a lot, and that doesn't include everything that we're involved in it, uh, that doesn't include any of the Wachusett things that we also show. There were fewer concerts this year than last, we expect that to pick up in the next year. Uh, so, I'm just stressing, we're a busy group of five people. Um, one of the nice thing I'll tell you about, about the new piece of equipment that we're purchasing, that we just, uh, signed the con- that you just signed the contract for, allows us to pass our cameras to Zoom, so that the people on Zoom will be able to see whoever's speaking, whoever we have the camera on, which will be a nice change, a big improvement. And, I mean, we did the Zoom where it's a little hacky, the way that we put it together, it works, but we're hoping to have a much tighter integration when that's all done. Uh, that's all I have, are there questions we can give you?
I have one, I have one other thing I'd like to add, I'd like to publicly thank Peter and the staff for everything that they've done, um, it's been a rather difficult year in my life, and I really appreciate the fact that Peter and staff would step up and take care of a lot of things that needed to get done, and they've done it without question. Thank you.
I have a question.
Uh, Leah, Leah's got a question, Mike, and then you go right after her, please.
So, if I understand correctly, the PEG access fees was a decrease of nearly $800,000 in...
No, 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 that was a misspeak, it's, 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 oh, uh, over the past four years it's gone down roughly a thousand dollars.
Okay, okay, I was, I was like... Well, I know people are cutting the cable cord, but I didn't realize that it was that much technically, so, okay.
No, it's, 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 it's gone down, it continues to go down, we're not the only ones that are, that are seeing that, okay, so in other words, okay, with the invention of Hulu and all the other things that have come down the road, um, people are drawn to subscribe to them and, and, uh, so much for Charter. So, okay, um, that's something that we're dealing with, and that's something that we know we're gonna have to look forward to in the future. And we're kind of trying to get as much done now, and hopefully sustain ourselves with what we get further down the road. Open to thoughts, suggestions, and...
Is there, if, is there a regional, sorry, is there a regional group established, because I'm sure it's not only Rutland Cable, I'm sure Holden Cable, I'm sure all the local access cables are, are feeling the same pinch, so, has there yet been any sort of regional group established among the local access cable state, uh, committees to kind of troubleshoot, brainstorm, or anything, I don't know if CMRPC does anything like that, I don't know if, just in general, there's been any thought...
We don't know of a regional equivalent group to a CMRPC. We do belong to the Massachusetts, there is a Massachusetts Coalition, I'll call us, uh, of, of broadcasters, uh, we do know that a great many towns, cities set up 501-3Cs. I don't think anyone's actually set up a separate, non-charitable corporation, and a number of towns are like Rutland, it's just a town department.
There are also some towns that have two cable entities in them, one may be AT&amp;G, one could be that, and one could be Charter. So in other words, you know, it's kind of a, a thing where, alright, the last time around, and that would have been, uh, 2013, I sent out, excuse me, RFPs to, um, different cable companies around to see if we could, if anybody was interested in, in buying into the town, I did not get one reply, okay? So, whether things have changed any this year or not, I don't know, um, in talking with other cable directors around the area, immediate area, um, they are not experiencing any change really in things either, so, you know, okay, so, at this point in time, we are kind of waiting to find out what we're gonna find out.
Alright, Mike, you, you have a question?
Quick question, and probably a yes or no answer to Peter, if you don't mind. Peter, did I, did I understand you correctly that currently there's no way for people like me to see into this meeting, but that that is something that's gonna change in the future?
Yes, we will be, we, we expect in the future to be able to show the cameras on Zoom, so that whoever's speaking can be on the camera, can be seen by everyone who's remote. But today, there's no way to do that.
Okay, now I understand why I can't see, okay, thank you.
And, sorry, I'm...
Go ahead.
Oh, no, no, no.
Go ahead, please.
Um, one other thing, for the ca- uh, calendar signup, Peter, I think this may be directed more towards you, has that been communicated to all the other boards and commissions and groups that may...
I haven't sent it out yet, I have, I have to do the announcement, Tamika knows about it, and she takes care of most of them.
That's fine, I just wanted to make sure that it was, you know, because I know there's a lot of different boards and commissions that meet sometimes frequently and sometimes more sporadically, that aren't just kind of on the, the weekly or bi-weekly calendar, so, um, okay, that's all.
Sorry. Easily. Um, watching a lot of meetings on my vacation this week, are there any ways to get drop mics in here for when people sit up here on a table?
We are evaluating different ways to, to mic this room, I am dissatisfied with the performance of the microphones we have right now, we're looking at ways to improve that.
Cause, depend on what, what way the mics, like I can't hear Norm Anderson, ever, so...
Nobody can hear Norm Anderson, I love Norm to death, but, I, his, his voice is at just the wrong frequency for every mic I've ever tried.
That's true.
So, question about going back to what, um, the, the 3%, is that based just on a cable charge, not on internet charge, I'm assuming by...
We've also gotten fees for internet as well.
Because I, I, I think everybody's, that's probably the one thing that you can count on, is that people can continue to have internet, they're cutting the cord on cable, and their telephones, so the bundle part, but, um, you know, the internet, I just wanna make sure that you had the, a cut of the internet too, cause that's...
We, we have seen a cut of that on, on the paperwork we get from Spectrum.
Perfect. One more thing, the Christmas program, thank you very much, I didn't, I was like, what did I do? Um, how do we see that, first of all, and what do we do for, for money-wise, is that something that we charge the school and then check the, I don't know how you get the product, but I'm just wondering the, the schedule for fees and all that?
No, in other words, we don't charge for those services, in other words, to go to a school or something like this, okay? In other words, under, uh, under the last contract, um, Charter agreed to provide cable connections between the two schools and here. Um, working with Central Tree at that time, they didn't seem to be interested, um, I've since tried to approach them to, uh, come at it again, and they're open to discussion, but at this point in time, you know, it's one of these things. And I was kind of hoping to get it in under common agreement, rather than have to worry about it in the future one, but, again, you know, we'll wait and see how the quarter ends.
So, so you actually bring up, you, you actually hit a couple of different points, and I'm not sure exactly which one you're gonna drive to, Carol, so I'm gonna talk about a couple things all at once.
The Christmas program, I guess, is, I'm wondering, when we, when you, mostly when you record those, you were at Glenwood, and then they would say signup for, to receive...
To receive the DVD, yes.
I don't know what that, I don't know what that was, and I left and it was too late, and, but I'm just wondering what, what it costs to us, and then...
Five dollars, to get a copy of the DVD.
Okay, and do we charge to, to record that, or is that just something we do?
No, we, that's just something we do.
Okay, that's all I wanted to...
We, yeah, there's a, there, it goes through the town clerk's office, they go up there and they add, um, say, you know, they'd like to get a TV, DVD, they fill out a form, um, I will check with them probably towards the end of this week to see what they've gotten, if any, for a request, and then we'll produce the DVDs and go from there. We charge five dollars a DVD, that money goes into the town's general fund, not to the cable, okay? So that was something that we kind of decided on way back when. Um, and so, you know, we've turned over probably as much as $300 in the course of a year for all of the concerts that we have done in the past. Um, so, you know, it's just something that we deal with, uh, one item at a time.
Thank you, I was just wondering how that worked.
The, the other thing that you may not realize you're touching upon is that we don't put it on, we don't put the children's concerts on YouTube, and we don't put them on our video streams, because it violates our policy that we set up, things from children don't get on the internet from us.
Yeah, there's too many, you can, you sign off saying you do or don't want your child photographed, so there'd be too many crosswires.
Yeah, we are, we're, we're not gonna get involved in that, it's easier to not do.
Right.
Alright, thank you very much.
You're welcome. And the Christmas show is showing through mid-next month, on both channels.
Alright, thank you guys, appreciate it. Um, unless there's any objection, I did mention that we, uh, did promise that we try to get Mike Sullivan on a little earlier, um, and then probably we'll go on to Department Heads anyway, so, Mike, does anybody object to having Mike go? Mike, you wanna go ahead, uh, to give us an update?
Alright, thank you, Mr. Chandler. Um, Tamika, could you do me a favor, and could you put up an old conceptual plan, please? So while Tamika's doing that, um, I know I conveyed to you folks, um, a while back that, um, Out of Class of Homes, in the middle of the screen, had to change their engineering firm, um, for whatever reasons they decided to do that. It has resulted in the new engineering firm, uh, having to basically reinvent the wheel. So they took, um, basically the concept plan that was approved by the HPDD Review Board, um, and re-engineered it, if you will, um, to make sure that everything there, uh, was, that's the new engineer.
Acceptable.
Everything that, thank you, everything that was there was acceptable and legal and met our standards and would, would basically work. So this was the original plan that was submitted, and just to get everybody's bearings in place, if you look over on the right-hand side of the screen, that's Maple Avenue, um, the existing roadway with the green line, a thick green line, coming up and going to the right over to the school, and then the little stub that goes to the left. The lot that, um, Out of Class of Homes is purchasing is obviously everything that's at the top of the hill, and you can see the existing layout that was originally proposed. It had some issues with it that we attempted to work through, and, um, we never really got there with the original, uh, engineer, um, the plug was pulled on him before it could be completed. So, I just want you to see what was originally proposed, that's 142 units, um, parking, you can see, um, it's difficult for me to point there, but, um, so, that was the original plan. So now, Tamika, please, if you would, um, put the, the new, um, great, latest and greatest, so, this is now the plan that the current engineering firm has, um, finalized, and, uh, they've signed off internally that this is functional, and, and meets all of our standards, and will meet all of the... and meets all of our standards and will meet all of the other things necessary to get built. So as you can see, the roadways have gone from vertical to horizontal. You can see that there's much more centralized parking. Most importantly, you can see the second means of degress. If we, if we use a clock down at like five o'clock, you see the second means of degress that comes out onto the existing roadway that's there. If you go up towards where the school property is, the entrance up there when you come in and take a left-hand turn, right on the opposite side of that parking spot, you can see a, a community center. That's their intention there. I have asked them, or we have discussed, the possibility of taking the existing flagpole, which were preserved, and moving it up onto that site perhaps on the island across the street from it. They're amenable to that if, in fact, it's movable. We can only guess at what the federal government has under the ground there. It could be brush more, or it might just be something that can be picked up and moved and, and taken back. But either way, that's in discussions as well. So probably the most important development that came from this plan is number one, the other plan according to the current engineers could not be gravity-fed sewed. This can be. I've discussed this with Joe Buckley, and he is, I don't know if Joe's with us or not, but he's 200% in favor of that. We've also discussed the fact that they would like to run the sewer and water lines under the existing roadway, which again, Joe is 200% in favor of that. If we go back to the entranceway off of Maple Avenue and take a left on that stub road, you'll see the, the black outline, make believe you're driving, if, if, or the black outline will be their lot line so that the roadway will remain ownership of the town of Rutland with the exception of that little stub that goes up into the, you know, the project itself. So you can see detention ponds, there's four detention ponds there. I don't know what else I can add to that, to this, other than what I've said. I'm happy to try to answer any questions I can. But this project is now in full-blown definitive plan engineering. I'll give you just a general conceptual outline of time. They expect by March 1st to have the definitive plan completed and ready to submit to all boards for permitting. And you can only imagine the boards, it's CONCON, planning board, DCR, federally, all of that stuff, all has to happen. So we have a, we are still meeting bi-weekly. Dave, George and I meet with them every two weeks for a status update, just to make sure that there's progress being made. But they're going, they're going full speed ahead here now, and like I said, I would expect by March 1st we will have a submission to all, all boards to begin real evaluation of this project.
If I, if I may.
Leah.
Mike, it's Leah.
Hi, Leah.
Thank you for this. I was here for RDIC meeting, I didn't ask any questions. I have a question here. This looks like it's a few, um, fewer units than the original plan. Do you, I haven't, I've been trying to count, I keep messing my counts up. Do you have a number off the top of your head as to what this new plan depicts?
Excuse me, I interrupted, it's, it's 142, 71 duplexes. And honestly, I haven't counted them either, but that's what they say, it's 142 units, so.
Okay, so there, there hasn't really been a change between the number of units between the original plan and this plan then? It's probably just the way the scale is or something.
I would tend to agree with that. Tamika, I think, well, I, it doesn't matter, I think they're numbered if we could blow it up enough. But I, I think, I think it's fair to say that they've said it's 142, so.
Peter and I counted them, and that's what it was.
That's fine. You don't have to worry about it.
That's okay, Tamika, I, I think it'll get blurry if you go so far ahead, like.
I think Dick said that they counted it, it's correct, so, that's fine, I just was curious.
Anybody else have any questions?
I, I.
I just wanna keep reminding the board that there are a couple of issues that, it's reasonable, it's reasonable to assume that they won't be issue, they won't be big problems, but they potentially, if things get complicated, could major, major issues. Number one, first and foremost, is the roadway, if, again, come, let's drive in off of Maple Avenue, take a left on that stub. I now wish we knew that when we did the cleanup, that we had asked the state to pave that road all the way up to that corner. Then we wouldn't have any issues at all because we'd have an existing roadway done by the state. The, the potential issue there is that that is well within the parameters of the wetlands and could be problematic. Shouldn't be for a lot of different reasons, but you know, you know, how things can go with state and federal regulations. If you, if you were to drive that site today, all of, if, and I, 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 basically around the whole perimeter of this property is a paved road, an existing paved road, it's still, call it a road, call it a driveway, whatever you want. It's probably a 12-foot wide, it's still paved, it's still there. So there have been some that say because it's an existing roadway, it can't be denied. There are others that say if they want to, they can. So there are, there are some potential issues there. We, we don't think it's gonna be an issue, I just want you to know that if it becomes an issue, it could kick this thing down the road as much as a year. That's, I don't think that's realistic, but it's a possibility. The second thing that I just wanna remind you folks is, you know, in the purchase and sale agreement that we did, or in all, in all the negotiations, and I've, I've told this board this before, we agreed to participate in the cost of that extension of that stub roadway down to their roadway. That's the only town incurred expense on this project. So I just, again, wanna remind everybody that out of that purchase price is gonna come some portion of money to upgrade that road. And then the very last thing that we talked about in a meeting just before this meeting that I probably shouldn't even bother to board anyway, but Tamika, can you scroll up to that three-foot section of roadway? Up on the, yeah, right there. Okay, if you, if you look very closely at the drawing where the roadway goes to the property line, you see the very bold line on the outside, that's the property line. And if you look at the roadway, it actually ends three feet from the, from the property line. And I'm guessing the state probably did that because they just didn't wanna deal with having to worry about, are they crossing the bounds or not? The area NSC has to figure out some way to convey that, and I don't think it's a big deal. I think, I think in, in theory, we could probably just donate it to the town. The area NSC donate that piece of property to the town so that that little piece of property that is not part of the roadway and it's not part of the school becomes part of the roadway. So again, I don't see that as a big deal, I probably shouldn't even bother, but it's something we gotta work out. Other than that, we're happy with where we are, we wish we were further along, but very happy with the new engineering firm, they really seem to be on the stick, and everybody's wondering why it's not happening faster, or some are. You, you gotta remember that if you take 142 units and you multiply it, pick a number, $325,000 a piece. This is about a $50 million project. And, you know, as some of you know, I served on the planning board for some time. Subdivisions far smaller than this take two, three, four years sometimes to get approved. So this is not at all unusual. This is very typical, and I think the fact that we have the HPDD review board that is the, really the governing body from the standpoint of overseeing the details of the project will streamline this, and Chris Senical is the chairman of that group, and his understanding of, you know, our willingness, our desire to get this done quickly, he's right on board with it, so I'm comfortable where we are.
Any other questions? Dave or Joe, do you have any comments or concerns or?
No, I would just emphasize once again that in August, when the Harbor Classic Homes decided to change its direction with the engineering firm, they brought on a company that needed about a month to get up and running. So from September onward, we've been meeting with those folks twice a month, and we'll continue to do so, even if they don't really have any real updates, just to meet with them, to hear that they don't have any real updates, so that they know that we need to keep this project moving, we can know where they stand on things, and we'll continue to be doing that. So just, just emphasize that piece, which that has been a useful exercise for all concerned, I would say.
Thanks.
By the way, if I may offer unsolicited comment, I'm very lucky to have Dave as part of this, this team. You know, he, he's the one that knows the, the legalities and the ins and outs of the regulations and has the time to study them and deal with them. So he's been a huge help, not only to me, but to the board, and without him, this project wouldn't be anywhere near as far along as it is and in as good a shape as it is. So Dave, thanks publicly for that.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
So, so what was the date they're gonna give us for, for the final plans?
Right, so they're expected to have a definitive plan prepared by March 1st. That plan will then be the one that is the subject of a definitive plan hearing before the HPDD board, and that's the plan that would be distributed to DCR, to the CONCON, and other relevant boards and commissions.
You're talking three months down the road for a definitive plan? Seems like an awful long time in my book. I mean, I don't know, I just, just seems like a long time to me. I don't know about the rest of the board, three months?
Ask the question in a different way, Mr. Clark, I didn't, I didn't clearly understand what you were saying.
What do you mean? I just, one, why, why, three months down the road before you have the definitive plan?
Well, we just got a conceptual plan the end of December, and now we're saying the 1st of March, we're gonna have a definitive plan. So it's, it's two months down the road, not three.
All right.
And, and it's a huge amount of work. Like I said before, I have seen subdivision plans that take three or four years to get approved.
Peter?
Mr. Chair, if I may, Mike, do we know when the property's going to change hands? When we're actually going, when the town gets money for this? I mean, hate to be the capitalist in here, but.
Well, the, the, the purchase and sale says that when the land changes hands and they get their first building permit, they maintain, they take ownership.
So that could be a year down the road, or two.
On all the permitting, basically, is what I'm saying. Now, what does that mean? You know, the town permitting, I just don't see as an issue. If we can't get our house in order, or keep our house in order, or get that done quickly, I, I, I just don't see any reason, other than, you know, the required postings and so on, I see no reason why that shouldn't happen quickly. The, the only problem with, from a timing standpoint, is they can't, they can't ask DCR to evaluate this roadway until the definitive plan is completed. So they, they, they can't say to DCR right now, hey, this, see this plan right here, see what we're gonna do with this, blah, blah, blah. They're gonna say, nah, you show us what the definitive plan is, and then we'll evaluate it. So sometime, let's just say in the middle of March, they're gonna submit to DCR for their evaluation of the roadway, and at that point, that clock starts ticking. Now, did that happen in, in a month? I doubt it. Did it happen in two months? Probably, as long as there aren't any, you know, snafus. That's, that's the point I raised earlier in the, in the discussion. You know, I know everybody would like for me to say, hey, on, on June 1st, we're gonna get some money. This thing is gonna be done, and they're gonna be digging in the dirt. I'd love to be able to say that, but I'd be lying to you. I'm trying to be as honest with you as I can and letting you know what the, what the, you know, the, the, the plan, the part of the plan that I can control, or we can control right now, is that we have a commitment by March 1st, we're gonna have a definitive plan. Beyond that, all bets are off. I can tell you reasonably that I believe we should be putting through all local permitting within 60 days. Well, Peter, let me ask you, you know, you're the CONCON guy, do you see any problem with that?
I have questions that I hope the definitive plan will answer because there are, there are a lot of wetlands issues here that we need to get correct, and.
I understand, but let's just assume for the moment that they designed it right and it can be approved. We should be able to get that done in 60 days, right?
Yes, that feels right from a CONCON point of view.
Yep, planning board is incidental, all they are is basically, you know, an A and R plan. It's, it's the state and federal stuff that we just, we tend to keep our fingers crossed. So I, I don't know if I answered your question, Mr. Clark, but I don't know that there was a question, but.
We'll survive.
What's that?
I think we're all set. I appreciate the update, Mike.
Well, thank you for allowing me to present it, and we're anxious to get it going, believe me.
Thank you very much.
Everybody ever has questions, you all know how to get in touch with me. You're welcome.
Thanks.
Bill?
Okay, next on the agenda, Mike, revisiting the letters of interest forms for Amy for RRG, with some other names on there, too.
Yeah, let me see.
I thought that there's a new appointee, Tracy Fassso, I think she might be on the call of interest for the economic development commission. What is it? Okay. Because that was one that she was going to have to.
Just because she has, yes, well, she's running to do it as an ex officio.
Right.
Amy's not here. So we have the letter of interest, and she is willing to do it as an ex officio. So does anybody have any issues, or do you want to get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Wait a minute, seconds.
Roll call.
Clark, aye.
Benoit, aye.
Wait a minute, aye with appreciation.
And Nichols, aye with appreciation as well. Nick, did you have anything as far as, did Ron have, you don't have anything to update us with?
Nope.
No issues.
He just wanted me to come and, to be here.
But there's no, no issues in town that's going on?
No.
Well, to control this routed meeting.
Babysit us, or?
Yeah. We need, we need a police officer present. All right, we did have an add to the agenda for an emergency item for the ambulance billing abatement, which needs to be approved and signed by the select board by the end of the year. We do have a copy of that in our packets. Seth, you wanna just give us a little bit?
Sure. Again, I do appreciate you bringing forth this, this evening. Dan handed this to me this morning as I walked into the town hall. As you know, each year, at the end of the fiscal year, we need to do a, an abatement or a write-off of. an abatement or a, a write-off of contractual allowances. Basically what this is, is during the course of a year, ambulances is going out transporting patients to the hospital, we're billing the insurance companies, and because we collect Medicare and Medicaid rates, um, the town has set our ambulance fees at a certain level. And because we're contracted with Medicare and Medicaid, the federal government adjusts our rates down to their rate. So while this may not be a write-off, it's in a contractual allowance, um, the difference from what we bill to what the government's willing to pay, and that's the difference between the two. And if anyone's ever opened a, a bill for a medical office or anything like that, you would see that Blue Cross paid a certain amount, and, you know, write-off was different, you know, an allowance was taken, and then this is what your physician received. It's a similar idea. Uh, there's one thing that we did accumulate since FY 2013. Uh, we do have some right, true write-offs of individuals that have either died and left no money in estates to collect, or they've skipped town, or we've, for whatever reasons, um, over the last eight or nine years. Uh, so last year, just to give you a, a rough idea, um, for FY 21, we billed out $1,159,901. We collected $449,196. Uh, contractual adjustment, which Dan has put in here, that we're looking to, um, take off the books, is $566,626.99.
That's 586, isn't it, Seth?
Uh, I, I suppose it is, but thank you. Um, just so you know, we have an ending balance of what is due to us, of $433,000 still on the books, um, that we will continue to collect as the months go forward. Um, all the documentation is here. Dan redacted any HIPAA issues, uh, personal information, uh, so there's no, uh, individuals listed here. Uh, it's just an aggregate number. Uh, the total we're looking to, um, to abate this evening, $756,791.48. Of that, a true write-off is $170,164.49. And Ron keeps asking if we can increase our ambulance billing rates, and I think that's counterproductive, because we'll just be coming back and adjusting more every year. Our rates are set, um, at Medicare plus 100%, so we've basically doubled the Medicare rate. Uh, and we've surveyed all this around the community, and that's what, uh, is considered to be fair and a reasonable charge. And the reason why our rates are higher than Medicare is if you're in an automobile accident or you have private health insurance, those insurance will pay the higher rate. It's just the, um, federal government portions that do not. Um, so if you have Medicare, Medicaid, and you have a Blue Cross, Blue Shield supplement, if you're over 65, um, that as well is adjusted as well. Um, so there's different types of plans, um, that take into effect. I would say we're doing very well. Um, we're ending up at, uh, 2021 with 130 calls more than last year. We're gonna hit almost 1,000 ambulance calls this year, uh, which is the highest it's ever been. Um, we're just out straight, and it's, uh, the revenue has increased, uh, since we've added the full-time staff, uh, three years ago. Uh, the revenue's increased by $150,000 annually, um, over the last three years. So even though we put on staff, the staff has paid for itself by the increase in calls. Um, you know, so you gotta look at the total three-year picture. Now that we're getting into the final year and we're having to pay for these employees, the money, it, we've, we've met our goal by achieving to, to get that revenue coming in. Uh, so I'm just looking for the board to, uh, approve and sign this this evening, so I can get it to Dan.
Well, I saw the ambulance going out when I was, when I came in. So I didn't know you did that, just so we approve this.
Yeah, yeah.
I have one curiosity question.
Yeah?
Have we, what if we don't co, do Medicare, Medicaid? Does that, would that help our?
No, it really doesn't.
I'm just.
I mean, if, if we didn't, we, legally, we have a responsibility, and we have to bill everyone equally.
Right.
Okay, so I can't, if you are on Medicare, I have to send you a bill. If you're a town resident and we choose to abate you and not bill you, that's a town policy and a town decision. But we are required by law to balance bill. We have to bill everyone equally.
Mm-hmm.
And if, but on the other hand, you look at, you know, ambulance revenue probably covers 60% of the cost of operating the ambulance service in town. So you could say the taxpayer is supplementing as well. So we want to be able to capture any available resources, um, as we can. And if people are paying for the insurance, we might as well get, uh, what they're paying for, so.
Any other questions? I guess not. Did I get a motion?
A motion to, uh, abate the bill, the billing for the ambulance, by department ambulance?
Do we need to fit the amount or?
You need the amounts in there?
Well, not just the total amount, it's, it's the 756, right Seth?
Yep, that's it.
756, 791, 48 cents.
Sounds good to me.
Alright, do we have, do we have a second?
Wait a minute, seconds.
Clark, aye.
Gotta get outta here? Yeah.
Benoit, aye.
Wait a minute, aye.
And Nichols, aye. Thank you.
Thank you, Seth.
Alright. Speed sign request.
Thank you.
Is this coming from, from you, Joe, or the chief or both?
Citizen request.
Oh, it's okay. Did you, did you guys look at it and have an opinion?
Which, which ones are they?
Glenwood.
Oh, Glenwood?
Was that Wachusett or what?
Wachusett and Glen, and, um, yeah, Glenwood.
Okay, I think, yeah, I think Wachusett, we recommended no action, because Joe just put signs up there about a year ago, maybe two years ago. Uh, that's, those signs are in compliance with the MGL. Glenwood, um, doesn't need, Glenwood needs replacement signs. It's missing probably about half a dozen signs. I sent, my, Joe, I sent you that info I had on that. So I don't think I signed that one.
No, no, this, this one's talking about the town hall parking.
Why don't you look at it?
This is Main Street.
Oh, that one, yeah, Mr. Chair, I submitted that one.
What, the one for Main Street?
Yeah, that's just, we wanna throw a stop sign on the back of the sign that's at the, um, town hall driveway, so people stop as they're coming out of that driveway before they cross the public safety building driveway.
Coming right down the hill, you mean, is that, if that's?
No, I was, is there a map on that?
Oh, actually, there is a picture. Oh, okay.
Yes, this is the driveway coming out of Community Hall. This is the public safety building driveway. So we want people to stop coming out bef, before they cross this driveway, 'cause we got emergency vehicles coming out and people just whip out of there.
Now, just a question, so is this where the, the electric sign is?
Yes.
So is that gonna, 'cause it, there's already?
No, this is already a sign here. I forget what it is, it's a.
Yeah, there is a sign there, it says one-way or, um, do not, yeah.
It's, we just wanna put the stop sign on the back of that sign.
So is that actually a two-way? That, I always thought that that was one way going through.
No, it's.
No, it is a two-way, but you're not, they, they didn't want them to use it like as a cross-through all the time, so there's, that's why the sign was there, so people, like during.
Oh, yeah, that's probably the no-through traffic sign.
Because of the rush hour, they didn't want anybody using that as a cut, cut-through.
I guess.
Um, alright, and, and I don't disagree we should have a sign there, I'm just concerned 'cause that little sign already blocks it. Is there any way that it can be slightly moved somehow, or?
Sure, if it happens.
Joe, is, 'cause doesn't that sign somewhat block the, the electric sign? You know that one sign that's right there? And then our, our, uh, electric sign is there?
So this, Nick, would you just show me one more time?
Yeah, so there's a sign somewhere right around here. The electric sign's over here.
Right.
Um, I mean, I, I've never had it walk, maybe the, the electric sign.
No, neither have I.
No, you don't think it's a problem?
Yeah, it might be set further back, it might be.
Okay, well, we use the other side, too.
Well, I mean, just use your discretion when you're looking at it to make sure it's not gonna be any kind of.
Right, but the traffic's exiting this way, we want the stop sign on, that's it.
Do you want a stop sign or like a yield to emergency vehicles or something, calling attention that?
Stop sign, yeah.
I mean, it's a, it's technically a driveway sign, it's not a road, so it doesn't have to be a warrant, so you can pretty much do what you want.
Yeah. Does that mean, I've heard that if it doesn't say GPW, Mass, Mass DOT or something like that on the back of it, if they run it, they can't get ticketed?
No, that's, yeah.
Yeah.
No, I think as long as, uh, as long as he puts it up and it's on a public way, then it's okay.
It's not.
Yeah, as long as it's.
It's basically a park.
Well, it is a public way, though, public has a right to access to it, so, um, yeah, I think it would be fine.
I'm just, I'm just saying if somebody runs it, you can tag them for it.
Yes.
Yeah, but he, he said he didn't really recommend that one.
Are you sure?
Yeah, so that's set by, I mean, we think it's a set speed limit, I say regulation that we can't change.
Okay.
So we need to put the signs up. Alright, you wanna just tell us where you want the signs?
So, can, I see two different requests, right? There's the Wachusett Street, Glenwood Street, so, and then there's the stop sign request
Yeah, so I guess it's.
At the ambulance, right? So, because I just, I don't, I see yours and I see this one, and this one just says, um, to change speed limit 30 mile per hour children. And the address is Wachusett Street and Glenwood Road, it, a number of Wachusett Street and Glenwood Road reasons for excessive speed. And I know we had put speed signs up on Wachusett recently, I mean, within the past couple years.
Yes.
And I know Glenwood, I think this is what you said, drops, but the signs aren't there or very faded or something. Is that?
Yeah, so Glenwood and Wachusett are both covered, the speed limits are covered by different statutes.
Right.
Wachusett's totally in compliance, it's correct the way it is.
Yeah.
Glenwood is set by state regulation, we can't change it.
Yeah.
Um, but several of the signs are missing. And the speed limit changes several times going from Main Street up to Route 68.
Right.
And I think there's probably a, a half a dozen signs that are either missing or damaged.
Right.
So, they're gonna get replaced.
It makes sense if you think about when you're driving on Glenwood, it starts out really wide and then gets narrow and kinda twists all over the place.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I just wanted to make sure that I was understanding the request. Because it seems like it's wanting to just, to drop the speed to 30 on, it's not, to me, the request isn't super clear. It's, it looks like it wants the speed limit dropped on Wachusett and Glenwood. And to your point, that's not really feasible. The best that we could do is, is for signage.
Oh, yeah, right.
Does anybody have any other questions?
No.
I guess for signage, I know we had this conversation with Wachusett, it's a funding issue, a little bit of a funding issue. I mean, the signs aren't ridiculously expensive, but it adds up. And given budget constraints that we've had, that we are currently having, it's not necessarily easy to pull from existing line items. Is that true?
We have one line item for signs. We usually exhaust it every year. And that's just for the purchase of the sign and sign hardware.
Not the installation?
Not the actual labor to put it in or anything like that. I think if we were to focus, we'd do the ones closest to Wachusett first, right? Where people are most inclined to go really fast where it's large.
Yeah, and, well, you also end up issues for the, the, the S-curve's up near Campbell Street too, with, they're missing some of the, uh, 25 mile per hour signs. So, I think we should just replace them all.
But to the select board members' point, the resources to do that are finite, so we could get started.
I know, but people continuously complain, and we continuously do nothing because there's no money for signs.
Right.
Do you have money to put up some signs?
Yeah.
Could you prioritize?
Yeah, put up the critical, critical ones and wait for the, for the other ones when you have the money. 'Cause there was a couple spots that, yeah.
I'm just saying, if you prioritize, and then you start chopping away at it, and if you don't get to that part words, 'cause I think critical and prioritize might be all up, and then maybe prioritize, that's critical.
Believe it or not, we also have a, and this is a great platform for it, we have a lot of sign theft. I don't know if you knew that, a lot of speed signs are stolen. That, that drives more of our costs than stuff like this, right?
Yeah. That's why it shouldn't have a fun street name.
Well, it's like Irish Lane is way up in a tree.
Mm-hmm.
Because it's been stolen so many times.
Seth, so, and I've only been here a couple years, S11 has been stolen like three or four times.
It's a great name.
I know.
Looks great in my basement.
You are being taped.
I know!
In front of the. Alright.
We'll do what we can with it.
It didn't sound like it to me. Do we have a motion?
Okay, so I'll make a motion for the Wachusett Glenwood Street requests to deny the request, but ask our GPW and police to work on getting appropriate signage up as funding is available.
On Glenwood.
On Glenwood. Because Wachusett is.
Wachusett is.
Done, yeah.
Second.
So we understand that the request is for not denial, but.
Well, we're denying the request, they're asking.
Right, no, I, I just wanna make sure the board is, is not looking over tonight.
So at a flea market, if I come across a sign that's pretty decent, do you want it for a donation?
No, I'm gonna say no. I'll buy a new sign.
Alright, any other discussion? So this is for, uh, disapproval, if I can get a roll call?
Clark, aye.
Benoit, aye.
Wait a minute, aye.
And Nichols, aye. Nick, can I get a motion on the next one?
I'll make a motion to approve a stop sign at the, um, driveway intersection of the police driveway and town hall driveway, um, ideally on the back of the existing sign with mind of clean line of sight.
That sounds so. And do we have a second?
A second?
Alright.
Clark, aye.
Benoit, aye.
Wait a minute, aye.
And Nichols, aye. Thank you. Alright. Alright. Weston and Samson, Sampson Contract for America's Water Infrastructure Act passed its special town meeting on November 18th, Article 22. Just for approval of the contract.
Just to clarify, if you don't mind.
Yeah?
Can I, Dr., Mr. Chair?
Sure.
That's a federal requirement, we, we have to do that. They actually, EPA, someone from EPA actually called the week before Christmas, seeing where we're at with it.
And this, yeah, this was approved at the special town meeting, so with funding coming out of.
Water and sewer tenderings.
Right.
It, it's already been approved.
Yes, yeah.
Motion to assign as written?
Do we need to authorize the acting, the town administrator or acting head minister to sign? Is it, I don't know. I'll second the motion to sign. I am next.
Is that what we wanna do?
What's the date that this is due?
A year ago.
Okay, so another week's not gonna hurt?
No.
Okay.
We can have the town administrator sign it when it returns? Any other discussion? Roll call?
Clark, aye.
Benoit, aye.
Wait a minute, aye.
And Nichols, aye. The next one. Weston and Sampson Agreement for Pomigasset Area Water System Improvements. To approve the agreement?
What can you, what can you tell us about this one, Joe?
We had the design approved, um, and we put it out for bid so we could get the construction done in advance of another failure on Miles Road. The contract is basically just paying for the engineering services, it's already been done.
We want a motion to sign, have Ron, Town Administrator, and or Joe Buckley, Public Works Director, to sign.
Is it both you and?
Either or, it says, on the back, it says either or.
Yeah.
Do we have a second?
Wait, one second.
Clark eye.
Any other discussion? Roll call?
Clark eye.
Benoit eye?
Wait, Benoit.
And Nichols eye, thank you. All right, next is letter of interest for the three hundredth anniversary committee, select board to approve and appoint this new member. And just to put in a plug, we're gonna have the polar plunge at the Rutland State Park on January first at eleven a.m. Plunge at noon, and gates close at two. And I believe some of these proceeds will go to the veterans. All donations go to Atlantic, differs for homeless veterans. All right.
A motion to appoint Susan Novak to the three hundredth committee?
Wait, one second.
Any discussion? Allos in favor?
Clark eye.
Benoit eye?
Wait, Benoit with gratitude.
And Nichols eye with gratitude as well. Letter of interest for Economic Development Commission, select board to approve and appoint new member is Tracy Ses- Sesaville.
So.
Tracy works for the bank, she is a Rutland resident, but, no, because we could, the last one was for.
I just was looking at the terms, so she, put in for two years, and that matches the two years on what we see, so. I'll make a motion to appoint Tracy Sass, is it Sassaville? Sassville. Sassaville? Sorry, Tracy.
Sounds good.
To the Economic Development Commission for a two-year term expiring in twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Clark eye.
Benoit eye?
Wait, Benoit with appreciation.
And Nichols eye with appreciation as well. All right. Select board to vote to send a letter allowing the items to be kept and the signs in place identified in, this will be discussed the last time. We were sent, we were emailed a copy of the, the signs, it would be affected.
What sign? I don't think it's.
I know we talked about it in our meeting.
The, the email's attached with it, if you have that.
So if I understand correctly, this is with the tip project, there's certain signage on Palmagussett, or?
I can actually talk on this one.
Okay.
It's not just signs, it's planters and other stuff. So basically, when the survey was done for Palmagussett, it's a current location, the current roadway limitations. Um, there's either signs or planters or other items that are in the actual roadway. What you're being asked to do is to issue a letter or a permit to allow those things to stay in the roadway location.
And.
So the roadway location's basically bigger than people think it is, it's, it's probably fifty to sixty feet across in places. So, um, as part of the work, as part of the design, they've located stuff that's technically in the road and not on someone's property. And basically, you're given permission to leave that stuff, stay there.
And if I may, this.
Does that help?
Yeah, that, that helps me, but if I may, it's not going, allowing it to stay does not impact the work that needs to be done. It's not an eminent domain thing or anything of, it's, it would not, the design of the new roadway is still fine, even with these items staying where they are.
No.
Even staying where they are, then what are we worried about?
Because this, the state and the federal government require you to give permission to those people to leave that stuff in your road as part of their.
Oh, all right, I didn't hear you say that.
That's okay.
Yeah, I didn't hear you say that. I mean, some of this stuff, it's, it's on our property, did they give you permission to begin with? Probably not.
Probably not.
Get it the hell off, let's be plain and blunt about it.
Well. I leave that up to the board, but.
I think they should re.
Well, that was my question, Skip.
I think the board should.
Was, was, why is it there, how is it there, and, I mean, for education, I, I ask a lot of questions to educate myself on this. And, you know, if, if it's violation, if they need to petition to have it put there. I, I'm wondering if there's a rule, there's a bylaw, there's a whatever, that we should be following, that we're maybe opening a can of worms, saying, oh, you put it there, that's okay.
No, no, they should remove it. They should remove it, it's on town property.
So, I'm not looking to fight about it, and I don't want to cause an issue, I just, I don't, I want to make sure we don't set a precedent.
We should set the precedent that they come to the town and ask to be put it on the town property.
You know, and I don't know how it ended up that it was able to be there, but.
Can I answer directly? All right. Um, to the best of my knowledge, the town doesn't have a policy in place. The only thing I can think that happened is people wouldn't have assumed that was the road, they may not have even known. I don't think anyone was intentionally malicious.
No, and I, I don't, I don't think that was what I was getting at. But, I guess I just want to make sure that we, I don't see a problem with it, but.
Right, I think the concern with the board is, is what happens when the next person goes and puts something on town property?
And then it causes us, you know, at what point does.
They use the old, you let him do it, or let her do it. And I can understand, I can understand the board's concern. I just know a lot of the stuff has been here for a while, so.
I'm not, and if it's all the same, I'm not in a position to advise you either way. I can just tell you really what we were asked to do with it, that's all.
I mean, I guess my, I mean, most of all these signs are businesses, and, you know.
So, old man oil isn't a business anymore. So that could be gone.
Right, no, but I mean, a lot of these are businesses that.
Yep, well, I realize that.
We want to be business, business friendly, but also don't want to, so can they come to us and, and request a permit individually?
There's no policy or procedure in place.
If there is no policy, then there's no permit to be gathered.
Right. What's happened is, is part of the right-of-way process, when they laid out the road, they identified basically trespassers. And they brought it to your attention and said, you have to come up with a way to manage it going forward. And it's unfortunate, we don't need an answer tonight, you can.
So I'm.
We've got some time, it's, it's a ways off, you know, but.
So I'm just thinking, would this be, would this be more of a planning board, like, if we, I understand that the select board would have to potentially either grant or deny these existing structures, I'll call them, going forward to kind of have something in place, would that be more of a planning board policy and procedure? Or would that be a select board policy and procedure, or?
A bylaw?
A bylaw, like, I.
A signed bylaw?
I understand that the roadway, I mean, even similar to up here, like, with the electric sign, like, that's in the right-of-way now. Like, so it happens, and we, I don't, I agree, I don't think that it was intentional or malicious or anything. Um, people aren't going out and surveying their, the road when they're putting their signs up, they're thinking, this looks like the roads, the paved road is here, I have however much of an easement, and I'm putting my sign here, and that's that, like. So I don't think it's malicious or intentional, I'm just wondering if there's anything that.
I thought we had a sign bylaw or.
I thought we did.
We do.
But I think it's more size and locate, like, lights and.
So I mean, maybe that's got to be looked at. I mean, I'm looking at, I know some of these signs are pretty big signs.
Well, they may be grandfathered in, because I think the sign bylaw is a newer, I don't, I mean, I don't know for all of these, but, yeah.
I mean, I don't know if the, the letters should go out to them, like, telling them that it's currently on property, and have, and are they gonna have to go through some kind of a process to get, individually to get permission, or they'd have to be removed or something, I don't know.
Second, second time tonight, what is your deadline?
Um, it's not, it's a state deadline, I'm, I'd probably say a couple of months.
A couple of months.
We're gonna start taking land soon, so, or easements.
Do we make sure, do we want to take the time to go through anything that we may have been writing, any policies? Make sure that we're not contradicting?
Yeah, we'll, we'll have it reviewed for our next meeting, and then.
Yeah, that would be.
We can determine on sending letters according to what their findings are. Is the board okay with that?
Yes, um, the exit, exit and enter signs, I'm, I'm thinking that that's the church.
I'd have to go ahead and look at the list, I didn't bring it with me, I'm sorry.
So it's, it's, um, enter, exit?
No, because the church isn't on Main Street.
It's Palmagussett.
Okay, so, right, okay, right, right, right.
But the address is Main Street.
So I'm wondering, the two fifty-eight Main Street, that's.
Oh, unless.
Are those our signs?
Oh, it's on, okay, that's.
That's ours, I guess.
No, these are all.
Yeah, the Catholic Church is the only one that has this entrance signs on there.
It's on Maple, I, I mean, Palmagussett is.
No, that's Catholic Church is two fifty-eight Main, it also includes their planters.
Okay, so, are those going to be a little, because of the way the road's going to be? Eased up a little bit there?
Take, yeah.
Are they gonna have to move it?
All this does is identify what's illegally, what's, um.
Some. Excuse me, because you have the roadway in front of the church.
We left the road, yeah, but the planters still fit and sit in the right-of-way. But in other words, the planters and the enter and exit sign, even in today's world, we don't change it at all, sit in the right-of-way. That's, that's the concern.
We'll do this in more research.
What else would you like from us, anything? We'll get you a set of drawers that show you how the stuff sits there, if that helps.
No, I think.
We're gonna have to look at the, the sign bylaw and see if there's any policies and determine on, you know, what kind of appropriate letter would be sent or something.
I just don't, I have to make sure that we're not contradicting anything that might be in place.
Right.
Before we send out letters.
That original email comes from Mass Highway, correct? Or is that the one from CHA?
CHA.
Yeah.
All right. Select board to open nominations for the twenty twenty-one Moses Howe Award for Exceptional Public Services. This is, was this the third year the award's been in place? Uh, so we just need a motion to post, to open up the nominations.
So moved.
Wait one second.
Any discussion? Want that posted, if I get a roll call?
Can we just, okay, can we just quickly say that this is for the exemplary public service to the people in town of Rutland? Um, and the nomination form and everything should be on the town website.
Correct.
Um, and can be filled out for that, um, and it's typically tried to been awarded Moses Howe Day. I forget the date.
It's May?
April, I think, is it April?
I think, yeah.
It's May fifteenth-ish.
Okay, middle of May?
Yeah.
So, do we want to set a date to close, or, and then review, or just open it? I'm fine just opening it for now.
Yeah, we're just opening it, because we actually, we had those emails, we had the, you know, the dates from Carolina, that we've opened it in the past. We're just gonna, you know, follow the same.
We can just open it, that's fine, we go, uh, motion and seconds, so.
All right, so we'll just have a motion to open it in a second, any other discussion? Roll call?
Clark eye.
Benoit eye?
Wait, Benoit.
And Nichols eye. Uh, annual license renewals for twenty twenty-two liquor license renewals and common vic removers. Need for ABC renewals. Asking this for a. Mashur Wanton. So this, this one we do, this is the one we looked at the last time that Beth had sent us additional, these are the ones that did not renew. So this is a license, licenses who failed to renew for twenty twenty-two. Bascone and, uh,
Okay.
Wanton. So we get a motion to sign acknowledging that they did not renew.
So moved.
Wait one second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Clark eye.
Benoit eye?
Wait, Benoit.
Nichols eye. Okay. Uh, Dick Schultz, Spotted Cow Cafe. Who's the ones? Let's continue, let's look for them, let's. Is this all the same? Schultz is.
Do we have to go through all the licenses individually, because after, there's a whole packet of stuff.
Right, the first one is, is Schultz. Annual lands.
So, we're just, we are actually just renewing his common vic license, is this what it's all about? The way I read it?
Which one are you talking about?
The one we got here, says, spotted, Richard Schultz, spotted cow, East New Farm, whatever, blah, blah, blah.
Okay, we do keep our annual licenses.
So my question is, if we're just renewing, what are we? What is our concern on what they're doing up there with their common vic license?
This one's alcohol, this one's, this is the common vic ones that are in there.
And you want to start from the front of this thing, for what we got on our list here, and you start it go when we get to it.
All right, which one are we going with? The first one I had in my package.
Is what, Spotted Cow?
That's what I had, a package.
Okay, let's do that one.
Does everybody have that one?
Yes.
That's the one that has the most violations. My package is kind of jumbled because it goes from the common vic to alcohol back and forth. So we'll try to do all the common vic ones first, and we'll start with the, Spotted Cow.
Not to be a.
So in the letter, or the note typed up from Beth, it's. it says, Eastview Farm and Spotted Cow Cafe, farm will now be cooking food in a static trailer in addition to operating in the country store as well. This has been approved by Board of Health and Fire Department. Servers will take orders inside the restaurant, hand serve in the trailer and pick up when ready, serving to customers, the food served will either be taken away or eaten on site. So you see the map indicating where the food truck will be located, seating inside cafe, et cetera. Um, and they will renew their common vic license with the added information regarding the food trailer. And so I think that's what all of this
Documentation, so.
packet of information is to show.
The packet of information is just like explaining how we're a farm to table menu and that we're incorporating like basically everything that we have on the farm, um, into our menu. And then if we can't supply something, um, that's gonna be, um, either made or produced locally. It's just in an effort to support small businesses and, you know, local, local businesses. And then we also included like our plans of how we plan on using the food truck to serve, that's, um, another detail that's added in that as well.
And, I mean, it says in, in our documentation that, um, Board of Health and Fire Department have done the inspections and are okay with everything and so, if that is correct.
Yep.
So, not to be defending anybody, but we never asked this from anybody else.
Never asked what?
All this information that Spotted Cow gave us.
I, I didn't know that we asked for it, I thought that they proactively provided it to us, I don't know, I, maybe I'm
No, they, we were asked for it.
We were asked for it, yeah.
Repeatedly.
From, like, I didn't know that we asked for it, like, I don't
Right, but it was, it was through the town administrator's office, but I assume, cause there was a change, right, in, in people that were operating, change in operation of it, correct?
Correct, and that's the only thing they should have been addressed.
But no, it's, it's
I was happy to provide the information, but I tried to, I literally put every detail of the country store and cafe into that. Every single operation that we have going up there is in that, in that packet. I even went into the history of the farm a little bit and how we're like trying to keep, um, you know, the stuff that was going on back in seventeen twenty three when it was established, going on today, I think it's important.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I don't know, we went through some extensive paperwork, but, I mean, they're serving beer, but at, at, um, Lilac Hedge and, uh,
Yeah, but he, but he was brewing over there, supposed to be growing his own hogs and all that stuff.
I, I just think that, I mean, it
No, I, it's probably good, it's probably good, then people know that's watching TV, that Spotted Cows Restaurant's gonna be open soon and, uh, there'll be plenty of people, you know, place for people to go.
Right. So maybe that's what the Board of Public Health has to do because of being moved or?
Yeah, they've already been there.
Yeah, they've all, all
Oh, they've been all there.
All of them, yeah.
Seen it back here, so.
Yeah, they have to, they have to sign off on it. Who's the pitch rate, want to get a motion?
Motion is approved, sign and approve, common vic license for Spotted Cow Cafe, uh, yeah, Spotted Cow Cafe.
One second.
Mm-hmm, and roll call?
Clock eye.
Benoid eye.
Wait minute.
And nickel's eye.
And thank you for providing us with the information, and sorry if it was a lot of extra hoops or whatever, but I appreciate seeing it, so.
It's okay, um, yeah, we, we, I've tried to like incorporate like some things like in the Rutland community and the store as well. Just different things, like we, we did pumpkins for the Boy Scouts, um, we did a giving tree, stuff like that, I feel like that and like the fact that we're trying to incorporate the farm to table menu is gonna be a great place for people to go. Pretty much like customer service is our number one priority and then just being a part of the community, um, not just a restaurant, but a farm.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And I think you, you're pretty active on social media, I think, also, which is great, and so I think the word's been getting out a lot also recently, so hopefully it continues, so.
I went up to the tree lighting ceremony and shook everybody's hand and told them that we were open now.
Yeah, I mean, no, I
Is that what, did you, okay, cool, um, people, um, were just unaware of what was going on because it changed hands so quickly. But I think now that the word is getting out, um, I think it's gonna be a really good thing up there.
Yeah. Thank you.
It's a great place.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Um, so then, we're gonna be signing, signing these and sending them to the, uh, so the town administrator's office will hand them out at that time. But there is a typo in these, so we're probably going to have to, uh, do a correction and then re-sign them after.
So do you wanna just hold on, resign, unsigned them to start?
Right, but we can still do approval.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can do the approval and just go up and sign them at the office.
I'll just sign it, I'll just
Yeah. Thank you.
Maybe
It's in everyone, so, alright. Alright, well, I'm just gonna go in order of the, the licenses as they sit on, the Dunkin' Donuts, two fifty five Main Street.
Motion is approved.
Wait one second.
Any discussion?
Clock eye.
Benoid eye.
Wait minute.
Nickel's eye, I'm just gonna initial each one just so that she knows that it was okay to
You ought to do these as a block or not? Or just name them off?
We probably should just go through each one, so it won't
Okay.
Honeydew, uh, eighty seven Main Street.
Motion approved.
Wait one seconds.
Roll call.
Clock eye.
Benoid eye.
Wait minute.
And nickel's eye. Rutland Pizza, um,
Not one, House of Pizza?
No, it just says Rutland Pizza.
Hmm, this House of Pizza here.
Oh.
Motion approved.
I'm just gonna make sure that that's correct since we're gonna
Wait one seconds.
Uh, roll call.
Clock eye.
Benoid eye.
Wait minute.
And nickel's eye. So I'll just have her check on that, make sure it's correct. Central Tree Bar and Grill Incorporated.
Motion approved.
Wait one seconds.
Roll call.
Clock eye.
Benoid eye.
Wait minute.
And nickel's eye. Lads.
Motion approved.
Wait one seconds.
Roll call.
Clock eye.
Benoid eye.
Wait minute.
And nickel's eye. Yang's Kitchen, on Main Street.
Motion approved, Yang Kitchen.
Oh, wait one seconds.
Roll call.
Clock eye.
Benoid eye.
Wait minute.
And nickel's eye. Uh, Tula's House of Pizza.
Motion approved.
Wait one seconds.
Roll call.
Clock eye.
Benoid eye.
Wait minute.
And nickel's eye. Rutland Market Place Incorporated, did I skip one? I think I got two.
Yeah, you did, Heavy Evvies.
Yeah, stuck together. Heavy Evvies.
Motion approved, Heavy Evvies.
Wait one seconds.
Roll call.
Clock eye.
Benoid eye.
Wait minute.
Nickel's eye. Rutland Market Place.
Motion approved, Rutland Market Place.
Wait one seconds.
Roll call.
Clock eye.
Benoid eye.
Wait minute.
Nickel's eye. EDC Companies Incorporated Baked Bakery.
Yeah, approved, I don't have that on my piece of paper, but that's alright.
Yeah.
Wait one seconds.
Roll call.
Clock eye.
Benoid eye.
Wait minute.
And nickel's eye. Eastview Farm and Spotted Cow Cafe, we did that.
Yep.
We have that in here twice?
I think it was
Got the hashtag shit.
We're set with that. Lilac Hedge Farm and Overlook LLC.
Wait, makes a motion to approve Lilac Hedge at Overlook LLC, DBA Lilac Hedge Farm.
Okay, you got a second?
Um, a second, I have discussion.
Okay, discussion.
Um, is this the same type of license that we were asking to make sure that we're seeing their books, that the percentage of farm products?
Should be.
And are we make sure that we're, we're seeing this, we haven't seen anything yet, but it also, also is fairly new, um, since we approved it initially. So I'm just wondering if we blanket approve this for the coming year, do we waive our, without some kind of a condition, that we waive our rights to be able to see that, to make sure that they're complying with that farm stand.
I mean, I think you can make the motion contingent on that and, and, um, or if, if Leah wants to amend her, she can.
Yeah, I can amend that.
And maybe set a date so that it could be done?
You come with all the paperwork or ship it all in at least, yeah?
Well, by the, by the, by next week, I guess.
By next week, or I, I would be happy to say you give them, at the, I don't even think it's been two quarters that they've been doing business, have they?
Yeah.
Maybe, they have, oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, they have, oh, yeah, oh, yes, yes.
Alright, so whatever the year anniversary then, maybe?
We're renewing it now, this is when they should be producing this paperwork, they, they were made, Spotted Cow do it, they should be doing it.
Okay, alright, then Then you, you would like to hold on it then until then or just approve it?
We can approve it, but subject to paperwork.
Great. Alright.
So, you, you wanna amend it?
I can amend it, I mean, do you want, do, what are you guys
I'd probably give them a month to get it together in case they, they get it together.
Um, no, I'm not that mean, okay, I'll give them a month.
Okay. Or January thirty first, or, or do you not? Do we need to amend?
Is this, is this gonna cause them a problem if they don't, it says if it
We're approving it, we're approving it.
Right, but the current, the current license, so when does that, when they're gonna lose, they're gonna be in window, they're gonna lose.
I don't want it, yeah, they'll Cause I was trying to go through all the, like, license paperwork as we went through the agricultural services, there's not much, um, and all it has is the AGCC stuff.
Which is still unapproved for
Right, that's, I mean, what we're proving now is the common vic, right, like
Common vic license.
Right, so.
But the common vic is the one we asked for.
Mm-hmm.
Making sure that they're doing the percentage or, I think, I think we asked them, we didn't need to see numbers, we asked if their accountant would just sign off on the fact that they're doing it.
Well, I, I, I mean, I, I kinda lean towards postponing until the next board meeting for discussion, unless we need to extend it further, we can, but I'm afraid if we extend it too long, I don't want it to expire on them.
Right.
But like I said, I can't really tell from this that if it's gonna expire.
I think technically, I think, so I know in the past, I think technically they expired at the end of the calendar year.
Yeah.
But I know sometimes we've gone into the first couple of weeks of January, I'm not sure anybody remembers, um, but I thought we were
Well, because it does say December three, I know this says twenty twenty two is when it expires, but I'm, I'm thinking it's gonna expire this month.
Right. Right. Right, like on Friday.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, so we should approve it. With the, with the
Contingent on
Contingence on the paperwork, so that it will not last.
Appropriate documentation that it, that they're meeting the, uh,
Mm-hmm.
guidelines for agriculture.
So I'm, sorry, I'm I that's fine, I just am looking at, trying to compare them to the other licenses that we just approved.
The other licenses, there's a restaurants in there, mostly restaurants.
Right, but the one that we just But, so the one that we just approved for the Spotted Cow says that it's in compliance with the Ag Exemption of the Zoning Act, MGL, chapter forty A, section three.
Yeah, that's what it says on there, yeah.
On their license.
And they brought, they brought in all the paperwork or they sent it all through the
Right, right, right.
But it doesn't say that on
But it doesn't say that on the
Exactly, you're think, suggesting that we incorporate that, yeah.
If, if, if any of the farms are doing, like, I, I don't know what the are they, are they doing the agro, um, exemptions of the zoning act, is Lilac Hedge Farm, I don't know. And if they are, then I think that it should be in the license, just as it is for the Spotted Cow license.
Right.
Um, and I was looking I just, I'm trying, I want consistency across
Oh, yeah, no, I don't disagree with it, nope, disagree at all.
Like
I agree.
And so
Question through the chair, is this something that Dave would, uh
We don't want him involved. This is, well, now I shouldn't say that, I'm not, I should, never mind, I'll clear my mind, shut You're talking about planning, Dave planning or?
Yeah, because he's involved, been involved in this stuff to make sure and we've been asking and make sure everything is, is lined up when we issue our special permits.
Right, we Right, we, actually Carol and I met with Dave and, uh,
I think this is where that, what I'm talking about
Right.
originated, asking them for, and I'm pretty sure it's the agricultural exemption of the zoning act, so I think it's
Right, and it, and it isn't, it is in the Spotted Cow, so I don't know why it's not in the Lilac Hedge.
Is the zoning act MGL, chapter forty A, section three, is that the agro tourism?
I believe it is.
Yeah.
Bylaw or, so bylaw or, I mean, this is MGL, right, so forty A, section three.
So it's already there?
So, do you want a motion to approve pending or approve and asking for?
Approve pending paperwork, approve the proper documentation.
Document Documentation.
That I would say, because you don't wanna see the license lap, but at the same time
I was gonna say, I wanna Right.
At the same time if it's good for one person, it should be good for everybody.
Yeah, no, I, I think the consistency
You really don't want my feelings on it, you this agricultural bylaw should have never been passed to begin with.
Well, you just said we didn't want it.
I know it, we didn't want it.
You just told us. So is everybody fine with that? So basically, it's, it's gonna be approved contingent on sufficient documentation that it meets our term of bylaw.
Yep.
I'm just making a note about the general laws, chapter one forty, just for
Are we setting a date on By when we should receive the paperwork or would like
Yeah, and the motion is out, or?
Well
I would say they should be
If, if it's gonna expire by, at the end of the month, I'm assuming that once that they're told, they're gonna get it in this week so that it doesn't expire, so hopefully they'll have it in, I mean, that's what we're trying to avoid, is that it doesn't expire by the end of the month. If that's the case. So, I mean, it won't be signed until they provide that documentation, so do we need to, I mean, cause it's gonna be kinda on them to get it in as quickly as possible to make sure they get the license, correct?
Right.
Yep.
I guess so, yeah, I
It's cause we're saying we approved it anyway, it's just contingent on getting that paperwork.
Right.
Is the board fine with that?
Mm-hmm.
And we'll just follow up with, um, Catherine and.
I mean, we have to sign these anyway, so we'll sign at the same time if we can get it in.
Right. Are they okay with that?
Yep.
All right, uh, roll call.
Clark eye.
Benoit eye.
Waitman eye.
And Nichols eye. All right, so these are alcohol. So these are alcohol licenses.
Thank you so much.
Oh, thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Have a good night. So this is, uh, for the alcohol ones. And this one is for, um, Lads, Michael J. Tooney, Lads Incorporated.
These are the A B C C, okay.
Motion approved.
Wait one seconds.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Clark eye.
Benoit eye.
Waitman eye.
And Nichols eye. Next one I have is.
Babe Rock.
Babe Rock Golf Club.
Motion approved.
Wait one seconds.
Roll call.
Clark eye.
Benoit eye.
Waitman eye.
And Nichols eye. Next one I have. Central Tree Bar and Grill.
Motion approved, central, to issue, I mean, motion to issue Central Tree and Bar Grill license.
Wait one seconds.
Roll call.
Clark eye.
Benoit eye.
Waitman eye.
And Nichols eye. Next is Still Four Corners.
Motion appro, to issue.
Wait one seconds.
And roll call.
Clark eye.
Benoit eye.
Waitman eye.
And Nichols eye. Colonial Package Store.
Motion to issue Colonial Package Store license.
Wait one seconds.
Roll call.
Clark eye.
Waitman eye.
Benoit eye.
Nichols eye.
I'm, I'm reading, I'm just.
It's like, oh shit.
How many, no, how many licenses do we have to give out?
These are liquor licenses.
These are the liquor ones, yeah.
Right. Um, was my question. It's the limit of liquor licenses.
Oh.
All the numbers at the town? And these are all gonna do one, so.
Uh-huh. I know, but.
It depends on population.
We think we have this.
Yeah, guys go by population.
Yeah, go by population. And I, chief could tell you.
Population keeps getting bigger.
No, but you don't know how many licenses.
I don't.
Um, next is Rutland Marketplace.
License to issue Rutland Marketplace.
Wait one seconds.
And roll call.
Clark eye.
Benoit eye.
Waitman eye.
Nichols eye.
Did you skip Main Street or did it's Main Street?
Which one are you talking about?
I have Main Street, just before Rutland Marketplace, it could just be that my packet is, is different than.
What's Main Street?
Main Street, uh.
Main Street.
Discount.
Package store, discount.
We did that one too, right?
No.
Why, what I have. This is the Milk Room, Sportsman's Club. Is that Main Street? Cause we're not even doing it.
Oh, did we do Main Street?
No, we.
Okay.
We used somebody else's name, but that's all right.
No, I don't think so. All right, so Main Street Discount Liquors.
Motion to approve Main Street Liquors.
Wait one seconds.
Roll call.
Clark eye.
Benoit eye.
Waitman eye.
We did Marketplace.
Yeah, that's where we did Marketplace, place of that one, that's where we did.
Okay. All right, um, Milk Room Brewing Company, outside serve only.
Hmm, motion to issue outside serving only, emphasis.
Wait one seconds.
Roll call.
Clark eye.
Benoit eye.
Waitman eye.
And Nichols eye. And the Rutland Sportsman's Club.
Motion to issue Rutland Sportsman's Club, for a license.
Wait one second. Oh, wait one second.
Roll call.
Clark eye.
Benoit eye.
Waitman eye.
And Nichols eye. Lot places to drink in town.
No place to eat on Monday, but you can drink anywhere you want, it's.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, is, is there a way we could add a police review to the liquor license renewals and new applications?
Uh-huh, we should.
We should, I mean, they don't.
No.
Even at the state level, is there any or not?
I'm sure the A B C C reviews it, but, um, there's no local law enforcement review. I mean, if you just wanna add the review to the viewpoint checklist, you know, where we could just get in there, um, and we could make a note if there's been issues.
Yeah.
None of these places have had issues with us throughout the past year, so, but it would be in the future if there was, you go, you say, three biophites, uh, you know.
Right, it'd be nice.
Right.
Et cetera.
So you wanna make a motion to, to establish that? I'm asking the board.
I, whatever we need to do to do it.
I mean, I'm kinda surprised that there's not, because we asked, we asked you guys to look at the, the auto motors and.
I'm surprised, I am too, I kinda figured it was.
Car parts, sure.
Yeah, look at the cars and, yeah.
Use cars, yes.
Yeah, I, to be honest, I just assumed that you were a part of the review process somehow, but.
Yeah, so I'm all for adding that extra layer in, I mean.
I think in the past we, you know, I was contacting and say, hey, this, everything okay with this, but I think once it all became digitized, we got kinda cut out, so.
Yeah.
So I don't think we need to, it's just make, make sure it gets put back in again.
Do you want a motion to make it official or?
Yeah, a motion make again, there's part of it.
Yeah, let's make a motion official. You wanna make it or you wanna meet it?
As part of the review process.
I wanna make a motion that the police review all liquor license establishments henceforth.
License.
Licenses for license renewals and application.
Any applications? Wait one seconds.
Roll call.
Clark eye.
Benoit eye.
Waitman eye.
And Nichols eye.
Thanks for bringing up care attention next.
All right.
Oh, sorry, uh, we, so Lilac Hedge's liquor is pending, so we don't need to do that one.
Outside, it says outside only.
Well, we approved.
No, Lilac Hedge.
No, no, right, no, well, it.
Because I know it's pending at the A B C C level, I think.
Yeah, well, it's not really all of, he hasn't got one yet.
Oh, it's not.
Yeah, yeah, so that's not, yeah, we're done with.
That's mine, I just.
How, sorry, how were they serving last year?
Oh.
One days.
Lilac hedge, oh, it was all one day.
One day license, yeah, yeah.
And we have to just be mindful knowing that starting January first, there, the one day is reset to the twenty-five or thirty maximum per calendar year. Uh, yeah, it was open yesterday.
I lost my agenda and shuffle all this stuff.
I did. If I may, um, we forgot back on the, um, ambulance bill amendment, we should vote to, oh, excuse me, you guys should vote to add that to the agenda because it was the last minute, less than forty-eight hours higher. So we would just have to go back and just make a motion to include it.
I'll make a motion to add the ambulance statement to the agenda for consideration as it was an emergent item, not known within forty-eight hours.
Give me a second.
It's no good.
All right, roll call.
Clark eye.
Benoit eye.
Waitman eye.
And Nichols eye. Thank you, Tamika.
Thank you.
Don't start a fire back here.
Don't come back.
Don't start a fire back here, you're gonna lose everything.
And do you remember meeting and saying, oh, another white schedule?
No.
I don't know, but she's. Wait, so will let Leah catch up on these signatures, okay?
She's ahead, I know, she's done.
She's the last.
All right. Are any of these establishments open tonight?
This is not a school night.
For doing an inspection.
So this will mean.
Yeah, it's not for me either.
Continue to somewhere else?
All right, um, so next on the agenda is to discuss for possible action, the, uh, letter going to the town administrator regarding his annual review. So Carol and I had met and discussed that we probably should send a letter to Ron, um, so I can read the letter that was developed. Uh, dear Ron, as a follow-up to annual performance review presented at November twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one Board of Selectmen meeting, we are requiring your written response. This response must be received no later than January twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two. Once received, the board will implement a formal performance improvement plan and then signed by the board members. So, um, Carol and I felt that we really should get some more, much more of a, uh, formal response to, to the concerns that the board had in the performance plan. So we thought this would be the best next step. I don't know if the board has any objections or comments or.
No, no objections whatsoever. Want a motion to sign it? I will make the motion to sign it.
Yes. Just anything to get out of here, Skipper.
No, I'm just, you know.
I know, I'm just kidding.
No, it's not the point. We, we're doing, we've done some good stuff tonight and.
Right.
Wait one second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Clark eye.
Benoit eye.
Waitman eye.
And Nichols eye. All right. I don't think we have any updates on, for this, this meeting for the goals and objectives, right? Do you have any, do you have anything, Carol?
Just Carol and I have been working, getting information from Becky and a few of the department heads and everything, start looking at the compensation, um, steps and everything. So that's slowly actually officially starting, which is nice and it's a lot of information.
Right.
And we appreciate the work that staff is doing to provide that information to us. I know it's not necessarily easy for everyone to compile it for us, but we're hopeful that compiling it and then allowing us to kind of at least see where things stand and make recommendations or whatever is helpful, so.
Great. All right, does anybody have any other, do you need to, I didn't really have an open comment, and now's your chance.
There's some closing comments.
All right, then I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Does Peter have anything to say over there in the corner?
Oh.
Oh, he's just.
Well, I just said anybody, what is he?
No, he, he's not just anybody, he's head of consummation. Motion adjourned.
Wait one second.
Roll call.
Clark eye.
Benoit eye.
Waitman eye.
And Nichols eye. Thank you all, thank you, Tamika.